Welcome everyone to the historic courthouse and I would like to call the Simpson County Fiscal Court to order for this joint meeting of the city and county.
I would like to call the special call meeting of the joint city, of the joint session of the Franklin City Commission to order at this time.
If y'all would bow with me for a word of prayer and after that Mayor Dixon will lead us in the pledge to the flag. Heavenly Father, we just come before you today to thank you and praise you for the things that you've done and given us and the way that you bless us day to day, Father. Lord, we just ask you to lead and guide us during this time as we meet to discuss the business of the people of Franklin and Simpson County. That Lord you would give us clear minds and clear understanding and that the things that are done in this place today will be the things that are pleasing in your sight. Lord, most of all, we thank you for your son Jesus and the free pardon of sin offered through him. And we ask all this in his precious name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have three items on the agenda that we'll try to move through as quickly as possible. The first item, we're going to bring Fire Chief Leslie Goodrum up. We're talking about some of the staffing and costs for operating the Simpson County Fire and Rescue 24/7. And so I want everyone to be mindful when we have this discussion. First off, this is a special called meeting, meaning that we will only be able to discuss items directly relating to what is on the agenda. And also, so for the purpose of this, we're talking about the staffing and cost. The chief has provided a graph and chart for everyone that shows like call volumes, call logs, and things of that nature. But because of the nature of the meeting, meeting and the item agenda is staffing and cost for operation, that will be kind of the limit and scope of our conversation today. So if the city would like to have the chief over at a regular meeting to discuss the graph and charts and calls, we could do that, but the purpose of today's meeting is just for the fire chief to kind of, I would say enlighten us, inform us of what staffing and cost would look like if we were to be able to operate the fire department 24/7. Chief Goodrum, if you want to come to the microphone, we'll let you make your presentation. By the way, the chief and I were in a hair contest and I was vowing to win it, but my wife vetoed my hair growth and so by default, the chief wins.
I didn't need place. Well, first of all, I want to thank these bodies for the opportunity just to come and open up some dialogue about the, you know, possibility of us establishing a full-time fire department with, you know, folks around, on duty around the clock. So I guess first, the first thing I want to do is just say a couple of things to maybe help, you said enlighten, but maybe just to help educate the public a little bit. I think everybody here in this room knows what I'm about to say, but there's a lot of folks that we encounter on a daily basis that just, you know, probably have never really thought about the fire department, you know, until they need us and then they realize that, hey, there's nobody there, you know, that we're coming from home or, you know, whatever the case is. So again, for the benefit of the folks that may be watching, we, the Franklin Simpson Fire Rescue, we function as an entity under the county government. So we are a line item on the county's budget, okay? So we are organized with, we have five full-time employees that we are there during the daytime, eight to four, Monday to Friday. So that we do have full-time employees, but again, they are there just during the day. Years ago, there was a great need because we were really suffering during the daytime responses because most of the volunteers worked day shift jobs. So I mean, again, I'm going back, you know, probably 20 years now where, you know, folks, something happened during the day and, you know, they just weren't there, maybe one, two people. So again, you know, the governing bodies got together and said, hey, we need to have some full-time employees just to help cover that gap because that was the biggest, the biggest gap at that time. So five full-time employees and we have roughly 18 volunteers on our roster right now. Our volunteer folks, you know, they do a good job, they're just, they're not always available. And ISO recognizes that and again, it's part of the rating, you know, they, so we get a third of a credit for a volunteer fireman. So meaning you have to have three volunteers to equate to one full-time employee. And they do that just as they, they recognize that because you're a volunteer, you probably do not have, you're not going to have the time that a full-time employee has. So we operate, again, and Monday to Friday, eight to fours, when our full-time folks are there. We do offer, a few years ago, we started a Saturday program where we stipend an employee and we fill with our volunteer staffing, so people just sign up for it. It's nothing required, we don't, you know, we don't force overtime upon the full-time employees. It is a stipend program that is an optional. That has worked well on and off. There are times when it does not work well and there are times when it works really well. You know, during the fall, things typically slow down and the winter, we don't really have any trouble, you know, keeping it staff. During the spring, summer, it does become a little bit of a challenge as, you know, volunteers are active with their family, you know, they're out at the parks and, you know, kids' sports and all that comes into a whole lot of their time as well. So we do have, we do have that ability, but again, it is, it's trying to get, trying to get folks involved in that program. So as part of all this discussion, the, I was asked to, you know, put together some numbers, you know, my assessment on what it would cost to operate a full-time fire department. So, you know, I really put a lot of thought into that and, you know, based upon our current need, you know, again, we could, we can honestly, you know, it depends on what you want it to look like. We could really blow this thing up and, you know, but I understand, you know, we don't have unlimited resources, right? We got to pay for this thing and that's going to be a challenge and there's no big secret about that. So what I have proposed is five full-time, five firefighters on shift at any given time, okay? And they would work a 24, 48 hour shift, which is largely what most fire departments do, not all, but the majority of them work. So you're on shift for a full 24 hours and then you're off shift for 48 hours, okay? So I would need three sets of employees, so five, five, and five in order to make that cycle happen, okay? So there's 15 firefighters and then the two, Nelson and I, your chief and your deputy chief, we would remain as admin daytime, eight to four, Monday to Friday. You know, it's not, it's not going to work well, me and him can't be on a shift. We have to have continuity, you know, so we can, you know, talk with all employees. If we're on a shift, then, you know, you're not going to see your employees and the admin stuff's going to suffer. So we're not even entertaining that. But the five full-time employees, again, so five firefighters around the clock, so five, 10, and 15, and then Nelson and I would be 17 employees total. Now, we would continue, again, our work shift, eight to four, Monday to Friday, all right? So I'm not going to go into the great details on the, I'm not going to break down the cost of each individual firefighter. I do have that data available. I think you have it and if you don't, I do have a hard copy of it and I'll be happy to share it with each one of you on those numbers. But I suspect for today's conversation, we're all interested in the bottom line, right? So on the very bottom line of the total of what we would need to make this program happen is, roughly, we're going to be in the 1.1 million additional dollars, okay? So on this sheet that I have, you will see the total burden is 1.3 billion, okay? So what that is, is that was to operate the program, but realize five of these employees are already existing. So, you know, and Nelson's eyes weren't, our salaries are not into this, this was just the additional five. So three of those employees already exist today. So when you, I backed down their wage and the benefit and all that out of that number and roughly, you know, what it was, that's roughly a $200,000 sum. So this is roughly a 1.1 additional dollars. Now, I say additional because this is, we still have the existing line item budget that I mentioned a while ago that we're re-earned at the county, okay? So today, the, today I operate under, it's right at a million dollars. It is a million and $3,000 is what the current budget is. So if you, the, you folks probably may or may not know this, but that budget number jumped quite a bit last, this fiscal year because I went to the court and asked them to supply us with a line item for vehicle purchases on an annual reoccurring expense so that we could better budget for the future. In the past, we have just had to say, hey, we're going to need a fire truck. And then, you know, we would come and ask for it for a year or two, you know, of course, that's got to work into their budget as well, you know, we get turned down. Within every third or fourth year, we get a, we would get a $400,000 surplus or, you know, a $400,000 grant for that truck. So I just asked to take that money and spread it out so that I could do a little bit better, you know, budgeting on that. So again, that raised that number up considerably because we were, you know, a few years ago, we were operating basically on a $600,000 budget, a dollar a year budget. But then, like I said, two, three years later, we may have a million and one budget. And I was just trying to, trying to get things leveled out. So we're right at a million dollars right now currently, okay? So again, and I've described what that service provides today. So the 1.1 million would put additional dollars. Now, these are reoccurring expenses, okay? So this is from, you know, here on out, right? With that, there is collateral effect, okay? So in order to do that, we have to house these firefighters, okay? So we have to look at our building and our structure. I don't have room for five beds where we currently are, right? So we are, our station, when it was built, roughly 98, still two volunteer departments essentially that built it. The design just wasn't there to carry us into having housing employees around the clock. We make it work one day a week, but it's not, it's just, it's not conducive for the future. We know we have to do something. So that, there is going to be some capital expenditures that are associated with that. And I don't know, I can't sit here today and tell you what that is going to look like. It's going to kind of depend on, you know, collectively, what we decide is the best avenue, okay? So we could go out back and, we could add to the station as is. If we do, then we're going to have to go in and I believe we're going to have to retrofit sprinklers and all those things, which, you know, those are all good things. I'm not opposed to that at all, but, you know, I don't know if that's the best use for those building dollars. We may be able to come up with an alternative plan that will allow us to meet some other needs that we have. So maybe we go out back and just build a separate house, you know? It could be too, you know, maybe we need to be thinking, looking down the future for the growth and our expansion. Where is our expansion happening right now? You know, maybe we need to be looking north of town, south of town, you know, whatever the case. Not abandoning our building at all, I'm not suggesting that, but building a, maybe we built a firehouse out there that does accommodate, you know, what our needs are and we can, you know, supply proper sleeping quarters, restrooms, all those types of things. And build it large enough that we can house, you know, we can use it for storage. We know at some point, you know, our old building here downtown, you know, it's on its last leg and we know at some point, we have to do something. So we have equipment stored there. I would like to get this stuff centralized. You know, today, we have a water rescue come in, you know? We have to go to the station, get the pickup truck, go down here, get the boat. You know, sometimes we have to go back and get our suits, this, that, and the other. It's not efficient, it's just not. You know, we have trailers that have a lot of equipment in it that we're storing, you know? We have to store them outside, we got nowhere else to put them because I need, but I need, when you need them, you need them, right? So I would like to be able to get all these things, you know, under one roof or at least under a roof where I have full-time personnel that are there and available. So again, I mean, that's, that's just maybe another conversation, you know? If we decide that we're willing to do this, then, you know, those are all things that need to be thought about. So I can't really sit here today and give you a capital expense number because I don't know exactly what that's going to look like. But, you know, I was talking to Myron the other day about roughly a, I'm not a construction guy, so please don't beat me up on this number, but at $250 a square foot for a commercial, does that sound? I mean, I don't know. But you do the math on that, so again, based on what I've described, you know, if we build a 5,000 square foot structure, you know, I mean, what kind of monies are we talking about? You know, is it a million dollars, you know, do we build a house for 500,000? You know, I don't know, but I do know that we are, we're kind of at a crossroads in our community here. We have explosive growth, you know, and some of it, in my opinion, is just unmitigated. And we need to, we're already behind, you know, the eight ball in, you know, fire protection in a lot of ways. You know, there's tremendous amount of industry coming and those are bringing, you know, obviously households, structures as well. So, you know, having said that, since we're taking action, I would like to be thinking, hey, you know, what's our community going to look like 10 years from now, 20 years from now? And I think we need to start preparing for that. So having said that, I don't want to give off the appearance that, you know, the 1.1 million dollars recurring cost that we know we're going to have to have to operate is the end of the line. Because we do know there is going to be some capital expenditures and some other collateral costs, I guess. There's probably a better term than that, but that would, that are going to go along with that. You know, when you have more employees, we have more, they require more, you know, uniforms, more PPE, more radios. Those costs though, in my mind, are pretty nominal for the conversation that we're having here, so I'm not, you know, I'm not down to the penny by any means, so. Having said those things, I think those are pretty well all the points that I wanted to make as far as just trying to give the, give you guys and the general public kind of where we stand today. So I'm happy to field questions or whatever you may have, whatever you'd like to stir our conversation.
Chief, I'll kick this off because as you well know, I started talking with you in my very first year about what it would look like if we staffed the fire department 24/7. So, you know, the public needs to understand that this is not something that just happened yesterday. I mean, we've had the discussion, but it's time to have a broader discussion. And I think because, in my mind, it's because some of the things that you just mentioned, we look at population and density growth, we look at industry growth, and then we ask the question, and this is just me, this is just me thinking here, we ask the question, do we want to be prepared to respond at any hour of the day? And I truly believe that every person sitting up here on the fiscal court and the city commission, I think every one of our answers would be, well, yes, we do. Then the question becomes, how do we get there money-wise? And I think that's going to be, that's going to be the task down the road over the next several months. Unless I'm wrong in that, I mean, if half of the court and half of the commission says, well, no, I think we're fine like we are, then I think the discussion's over. But if the majority of the court and the majority of the commission says, you know what? We really do need to get ourselves in a place that we're prepared for emergencies around the clock, then we need to start having the discussion about how do we fund it? How do we involve the public? Do we involve the public? How, and if so, how do we involve the public? And honestly, and I've told the fire chief this, I would tell the public this, I guess I am telling them right now, we're on camera. The fire department is kind of like law enforcement and the ambulance service. I see Dale sitting back here with us. I like knowing that we have people ready to jump in an ambulance and take off. I wish we could just pay them to sit there and never have to go anywhere. I would like to be able to staff the fire department around the clock and pay those folks to sit there and wait on a call that never comes. But the reality is the calls do come and there's never a convenient time for a fire, a disaster, and an emergency. And if it's your house that's on fire at one o'clock in the morning, you're probably really glad that somebody is sitting there ready to jump in the vehicle and take off. We also know that in the 2020 census, Simpson County was ranked as the sixth fastest growing county in the state of Kentucky. I don't know how the Census Bureau comes about these metrics. I don't know how they determine all of this, but the information they gave also suggested that in the next four to six years, the expectation is that our population would be near 30,000 people. So now we are two years removed from the census and we've issued hundreds of permits for residential dwellings. With the understand, you know, understand when I say that, that you get one building permit for an apartment building that may have eight dwellings. So you may issue one permit, but you get eight dwellings. Or you issue one permit, you may get 16 dwellings depending on the size and scope of that project. My guess would be, and this is only a guess, based on the number of permits issued and what we've seen, my guess would be that easily we have added, I would think, maybe 1,500 people since the 2020 census. If that's the case and their assessment is correct that in four to six years, we'd be approaching 30,000, I don't think at the rate of growth that we're seeing and the number of items that come through the planning and zoning office, I don't think it's out of the realm of possibility to think that four years from now, we have nearly 30,000 people in Simpson County. And, you know, you're going to be able to generate, you think about, you're able to generate additional revenues by increasing assessments. And I meant to jot this down, but y'all bear with me just a second. I asked the PVA just yesterday what the increased dollar amount of this year's total county-wide assessment is versus last year, and it is $110,581,092. That's the increase in assessed value this tax year versus last tax year. So if you, if you keep at that same rate of growth, you're going to see quite a bit of increase year over year in assessed value, which generates more tax revenue even if the tax rate remains the same.
But keep in mind, that's categorical.
That's what?
It's categorical.
Right.
Meaning, you know, although that one number is a big number, if somebody looks at it like 100, most people that may watch this today, they may not be able to distinguish when you put that number out there like that. Our schools get the bulk of that money.
True.
Okay, so let's, I just want to clarify that.
Yes.
You know, because when you say that, I want people to understand that when money comes in, it's not like, that's a pot of gold that we give to the city, nor the county. So, you know, our schools definitely, probably, I would say the school gets the bulk of that money. If you don't leave it, just look at your card when it comes out. So, you know, that's a good figure, Mason, thank you for putting that out there like that. But at least put it out there where people understand the breakdown of all the money that's coming in so that they won't look at us and just say, oh, you guys got all this money.
To put that in perspective, that amount of money for county government would mean an additional $110,000 in revenue this year.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
What was the initial now?
10 million. 110 million.
Only 100,000 dollars will come.
110.
So you see the difference?
Yeah.
If I'm out here looking at this, that's a great difference.
Yeah.
But that's the truth. So therefore, we're not, we're not getting all that money.
No, no, no. I didn't say we were getting an extra 110 million. That's just the difference in the assessed values.
I want to make sure that people that hear this know how that breakdown is and they understand that, because it, it makes it look like we're, you know, we're, we're...
Like they got, they gonna get an extra 110 million dollars?
A lot of people don't understand that.
I know, I know.
If we're getting an extra 110 million, we're going to have a full-time fire department.
Yeah.
There wouldn't be no reason why we'd be getting that kind of money.
If we were getting an extra 110 million dollars, we probably wouldn't need to have these joint meetings. We'd just be like, do it, do it, do it.
Chief, I got a couple of questions. Um, uh, right now, we're, we're 50/50 on equipment with the cities that are correct?
Well, I can, I can answer that question maybe easier than the chief, because I got Nicole to run this. The, the current appropriations to the fire department are 989,672 for the current fiscal year. If you pull out the 120,000 dollars that we plugged into this fiscal year budget to be on the, the, what the chief was talking about, our recurring money to cover, uh, fire trucks and so on down the road, leaves 869,672. And of that 869, the city contribution is 308,842. So...
Right, right over 50%.
Thirty, 35 and a half percent.
Thirty-five.
And, and so I want, and I want everyone, I want everyone that's sitting here today to understand this, city and, and magistrates. I'm not here today to talk about this for some kind of, let's, let's get an equal split, let's see who we're on the call. I'm not here to talk about any of that because what, what we have to understand on county government side is that we receive county taxes from every resident in this county, even those that live inside the city limits, and we do have some obligation to those residents. So I'm, I'm not here to talk about...
I was just wanting to clarify.
Right. How, how it works out. But I think where you're going, Marty, is right. On the, on the capital expenditures, it typically is a 50/50 split. But then when you break down the operational day-to-day, that split is, is less than the 35 and a half, but the total, if you total it all up in this current fiscal year, it's like 35 and a half. I'm not worried about, I'm not personally worried about the splits. I'm worried more about, can we get to the place that we can fund this?
The, the reason I was asking that on this additional 1.1 million, is that kind of the way we're looking at it?
Well, it would all be operational expenses.
So, yes, and I, I failed to mention that, uh, this 1.1 million dollars, again, this is personnel, operational cost.
Right.
That is all that number is. So, and I think maybe, maybe we're, to answer your question about equipment being 50/50 or whatnot. So, uh, of course, they, you know, years ago, when we combined the services of the department, so the city, some years after that, uh, and I can't give you an exact, probably 2015-ish, 16, maybe somewhere in there, the, the fire trucks that the city owned, they gave to the county. So the actual apparatus are all now, everything inside the fire station is, is the county's. The city owns the property and the building. And accord to our, uh, our, uh, the mutual agreement that we have with the city, the capital expenditures, i.e. large purchases like fire apparatus, uh, those are split. I don't know, you know?
Well, the reason, I, I mean, I'm trying to, I'm, I'm kind of a numbers guy. I'm trying, if it's, if we're going, just for easy figuring, if it's 1 million, that would be, and we're dividing it out the same, that would be the city's going to have to come up with about 350,000, and the county's going to have to come up with 650,000. That's, I mean, that's, that's the numbers we got to get to. Can, can we come up with those numbers?
And then when you're talking about numbers, the population doesn't reflect how many taxpayers we've got. It doesn't reflect that. We've got what, 10,500 to, estimated up to 11,000 tax bills going out. So, you know, we could have up to 50% of the residents here in this community that live in here that's not paying. I mean, you incorporate it into your rent some sort of way. But, uh, like the apartments we're having built, they're built cheaper, you can build those things cheaper than you can build a single-family dwelling. So we need to think about that, because that taxpayer is going to get pretty stout for, say, 11,000 people, but when we start putting numbers together.
But, that's true. I, I was just saying, well, if you wanted to make it 1.1 million, basically, the city needs to figure out if they can fund 400,000, and the county needs to figure out if we can do 700,000. That's, that's all this is about. I, there's, I don't need any justification if you need a full-time fire department. I firmly believe we do. Because, you know, it's just common sense. If you had somebody there in a fire at 1:00 in the morning like Mason's talking about, and you've got somebody full-time there at the department, they're going to be able to respond, whether it's, you got to wait for a volunteer to get in, and, and we have good volunteer firefighters. But if you have to wait for them to get to the station.
But it's going to be more than 1.1 million to start off, because we can't, we can't have a full-time fire department without having extra accommodations. I realize that debt could probably be spread over a 20-year period. But we can't, we got to have both. We can't just have one. We can't go to a full-time fire department without...
I, I totally agree. But if we're not, unless we vote to do this, then that's, that's going to be, it's going, 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 go hand in hand. It's not like we can say, well, we'll build a building and then we'll cut out a full-time fire department later.
We got to have all this up front.
Yeah.
Your, your point is if either body says, you know what, it doesn't matter, if you give us a new building tomorrow, we can do this?
Right. That's what I'm saying. We have to figure out in our budgets, can we, can we provide that money?
I don't know. I mean, until we find, we're, we're going to have to find a mechanism to fund this first. And then we get our numbers together. And then, then I would be in favor for the public. That's the only way I would support it, if the public actually votes on it.
So when could you get it put on, when can we get it put on a ballot if that's what we decide we want to do?
Okay, I can handle that one.
Yeah. And first thing is, let's, let's, I mean, I don't think this is anything we're voting on, but I think, at least by show of hands, how many people here would be interested in even pursuing this discussion beyond this minute right now? Because if, if, if only three people raise your hand, chief, you might as well sit down. I, I mean...
I'm in favor of moving forward.
Of, of pursuing the discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, I just...
Pursuing the...
Huh?
Pursuing the discussion?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I don't, I don't have no problem with that.
Okay. So, so yes. Now, the chief can answer your question you just asked, because he's got all that down.
Okay. So, uh, you were asking if, if the, the, the bodies decided that we wanted to let the, you, you wanted the public's input in the form of, let's let the public decide and, and vote yes or no. Okay? So the way that works, uh, and again, I, I did a little research, and this has been some time back, um, and I didn't have any ideas. I just called Jolene at the clerk's office, uh, and she, she got me an answer from some of the folks at the state. And, uh, there, there's a KRS, and as a matter of fact, I do, I have it there. But, um, long story short, uh, the county would have to pass a resolution saying, you know, that we are putting this on the ballot for folks to vote on. So in that conversation, you have to decide, um, you know, it, it just reads something like, you know, are you in favor of, uh, you know, we're wanting to come up with this, this tax or whatever it is. And again, the funding mechanism, I'm less concerned with, that's y'all's job, okay? And, and I've said that, and, and, um, again, I, I don't know what's the most palatable. I mean, you know, with your constituents and what's your personal opinions. We all have our own opinions, and that, that's, that's great. Uh, but long story short, let's, just for this example, uh, for clarification, let's just say we decided that we're going to put it on tax bill, okay? That you're, we're going to do a hundred-dollar flat tax. It's not quite going to be enough, maybe it'll be 110, 100. We came up with a, a rough number, 110 dollars, let's say, on your tax bill. Uh, with that, it should generate, based on the roughly 10,500 dollar tax bills, uh, and I, I apologize, I forgot that number. But whatever that number was, uh, you know, it's going to generate this much money with that. We are going to hire these employees, and you know, that, that's, that's what it is. And then you just simply, it's yes or no. I'm in favor of paying 100 more dollars on my tax bill or a hang?
But that doesn't represent the structure.
No.
Correct? That's, we're talking about just...
Or the real amount, because you're already paying almost a million dollars.
And I said, I said that from the very beginning.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, okay. So please let me be, let me be very, very clear when I say this, okay? This number that I, the, the 1.1 million, that is additional.
Right.
Additional. I, I'm not, the, the money that we operate of already exists. I mean, it's there today. So I'm, when I say 1.1 million additional, and the money that we have today is already there. I'm not worried about how we're coming up with that. We already have it. So the money that we have to, you know, the money that we have to have to get to that 1.1 million is the conversation of, you know, how do we, uh, how do we get that money? So again, and I'm just using that as an example. You asked about the ballot, and that's something similar, you know, that's, is what it would be. So on that note, uh, and I, I was off just a little bit, uh, I, I think I misread that, uh, that KRS when it said, it said August of the general, and I, I got a little bit off on my, my dates. I was pressing us a little bit tighter than we were. Uh, however, so if this is on the ballot for the 2024 election, okay? So the general is in November. Is that correct? Resolution has to be passed by August. Because again, I assume at that point, I don't know this, I assume it probably goes to department or local government or whomever, or somebody I'm sure somewhere has to bless it, but I don't know those things.
You know the answer to that, counselor?
It goes to the Secretary of State's office for certification and put on the ballot.
Yeah, okay, so...
But it's August 21st.
Okay. So, uh, now I didn't realize this until today, uh, that apparently the governor's election is in '23. It's an odd year. I, I did not realize. I thought it was on the same as the '24.
No, it was '23.
Okay. So we looked that up.
Yeah, we are.
So in theory, uh, in theory, we're back to where I started on being saying, hey, we needed to have this back by August of '23 to get it on the '24 election. Well, actually, you know, if we can, if, if, if we can come to an agreement and say, hey, this is, you know, if, if we're voting on it, then that, we have to have all those details worked out so that it can be very clear on the ballot for what people are voting on. And, you know, again, the court would have to pass a resolution, and that has to be done by sometime in August. So here we are in October. I mean, we're, so we're what, 10, 10 months out? That seems like a long time, but there, we got a lot of ground covered. So, you know, uh, we are somewhat on a time crunch. Now, having said all those things, understand, if you got, if I walked out of here today and you, and then this, this, this body voted and said, hey, here's just a million dollars, run with it this afternoon, we, we still have to have time. There's a lot of things that have to take place. Number one, uh, you know, mentioned we do have to have a structure, and, you know, getting a building, building a year, you know, that, that might be a big ask right now, you know, with, uh, supply chain issues and, and, you know, lining up contractors and all those things. So again, that kind of, that puts us out more if, if, you know, we're just that much further away from actually being able to, you know, quote-unquote, put a product on the field. You know, we're, 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 uh, we just having all those things. We have to have a hiring process. Uh, these folks have to have what's called a CPAC card. It's a new state law that requires them that, uh, and that is a 10-week process just to get a card, just so that you can apply for a job as a firefighter. So with that, then we have training, uh, you know, and, and I'll get to you in just a second. Uh, the, the, uh, training, we have, we have to get our firefighters trained. We have one year to get them a 400-hour. So that's kind of the, you hear of fire academies and whatnot, basically it's 10 weeks and 40 hours. There's another 10 weeks. So there's 20 weeks there, and then you've got another, you figure six weeks of filtering through, you know, applications and, and those types of things to even have a hiring process. So there, there's a lot that has to be done on the back end of this thing. But those conversations aren't even worth having until we, you know, obviously talk about the elephant in the room and figure out if we can finance this thing. Yes, ma'am.
I, I, I've just got a question. Um, I know when we talk about the police department, we, we have a figure that's given to us, uh, based on our population as to how many policemen we should have.
Okay.
Okay. Is there a figure that is, could be looked at as far as the population of Simpson County, uh, you know, how many full-time fire department personnel we need? And have we looked at other communities our size to see what size fire departments they have?
Sure.
In comparison?
Yeah. So those are, those are all very good and valid questions. Uh, so there are some statistical data, and again, I, I apologize because I, I didn't, I've not dug through those individually, because it's somewhat irrelevant to what our community looks like. So there are data that says if you are a, a class one city, or if you are a class two city, you are a class three, you, it says ye shall provide. Not, this is optional, this is what you are going to do. Okay? Uh, and, but there are data that says, you know, based on populations, and generally, these are like 100,000 more. So again, I'm not really studied a lot on that, because it, we're not 100,000, 100,000 people, right? Uh, county, again, those are city stuff, okay? Because we are an entity of the county, then county, it's, it's, it's different. Uh, there, there may very well be things out there. There is a, again, everything I've seen has been city. It's like rural class city. If you are a rural class city, if you are this. So there very well may be something that says, you know, this is kind of what it ought to look like. Um, but to me, it, it's really a, it's really a conversation of, you know, what is your individual need, you know, of, of, of our community. And we do have unique challenges. I mean, uh, you know, we, our department, being a combination department, and we cover, uh, you know, we've got 234, 36 square miles, uh, you know, and a lot of that is rural farmland ground where we deal with field fires and, you know, all those types of things. A lot of communities, especially these communities we're describing with 100,000 people, they don't have that. You know, they, they just don't have, that, it's not in their area. But we also do have now the growing challenges of more people, uh, more, you know, industry. Uh, I-65 is a challenge. You know, we run a lot of the rescue, you know, calls, uh, over there. And I mean, from, we get very little benefit out of that. I mean, you know, as far as the, there, there's not the, the tax base per se. And I guess you have people getting off and spending a little money here, you know, like getting gas or whatnot. But, you know, we do a lot out there. Uh, so back to your question of other communities. So Russellville, for example, you know, they, they have full-time, uh, employees. They run a combination as well. However, they do run 24-hour shifts over there. Uh, the difference is that's Russellville proper, okay? So, you know, they're able to do that with, if they have a big event, of course, they have their volunteers. But they also have mutual aid. There's, gosh, I don't know, nine, 10 volunteer departments in, plus Logan Aluminum, that sends folks out. Uh, Logan Aluminum has probably the best fighter, I mean, the most well-equipped fire department in Logan County, uh, you know. Uh, so, but they send folks out. So it's really hard to compare, you know, you, you kind of have to break it down into what our community looks like. And there may not be another community that, that operates, is organized the way that we're. So you kind of have to, kind of like, we're going to try to compare ourselves to Warren County. You know, we can't, we can't compare ourselves to Warren County's totality. But we can somewhat compare our community with maybe the community of Woodburn, where they have the same, you know, they're, they're experiencing a lot of the same challenges we are. They have a lot of ground, you know, a lot of, uh, a lot of acreage, farm grounds, those things that, that they cover. But now they've also got South Warren, and you've seen what that has done to that population. And they're, they're, they're having these same conversations about trying to get full-time, you know, folks, you know. And, I mean, we're a little bit ahead of them. But, you know, again, we can't leave Warren County as a whole, but you can, I try to look at different communities and see, you know, kind of where we're at. Uh, Glasgow, which I would, you know, I, I really feel like we have more industry than Glasgow. I mean, I, I've been there, uh, you know, we, I've, uh, delivered up there a lot, you know, in SMI, and I've seen, and, uh, you know, they, they have full-time fire department in, in Glasgow. And I, I don't know the numbers, maybe eight that they keep, 10?
It's eight in the toilet.
That they have at any, you know, on the shift. Plus they're, you know, they have like eight that they keep around the clock, where I'm asking for five, and then they've got another three or four, uh, you know. So that kind of gives you an idea of their... Portland, uh, a few years ago. And that's kind of where I, you know, some of this was the genesis of letting the people vote for, uh, you know, a few years back. So they operated their fire hall downtown, I call it downtown... So they operated their fire hall downtown, I call it downtown, but, you know, on the main drag with the police department and that one big combine, used to be those Cape Ring, I reckon. So they were there, uh, but they did a similar, uh, you know, talking to their chief, you know, they did a similar proposal and they just said, hey, you know, we need to have some full-time employees, you know, more around the clock. Um, well, I think they already had like two, I think they had maybe, or maybe four employees, two on each shift, I guess maybe they had six, whatever it was. But, uh, anyway, they, uh, a, a similar measure, they said, hey, you know, we're going to put out a tax on your, on this, you know, fee, whatever it was. Uh, and they said, with that money, we're going to hire, you know, twelve firemen, I believe it was two policemen. And, you know, they just let the people vote on it and they overwhelmingly, you know, said, hey, this is what we want to do. And then, now again, I don't know if those monies covered the cost of the new construction, but they have two new fire halls, one on either end of town and I'm sure you've seen those.
Hmm.
Uh, so I mean, those, those folks are operating around the clock. Uh, now they also, I don't want to misspeak because I don't know this a hundred percent, if they have volunteers or if they just do callback. But, you know, obviously a big event, you know, they have, uh, the local, you know, the, the fire departments around. We've done some mutual aid with them. You know, everybody pretty much has mutual aid. I mean, you know, nobody can be a hundred percent prepared for everything because you can get overwhelmed pretty quick.
Well, another question. Have, have you considered, did you consider or look at it or could you look at possibility instead of having, you know, five for three shifts? Is there a possibility of, you know, building up to that point?
Sure.
But, but within that, um, parameters, possibly taking what you have, maybe having their, uh, their time, maybe instead of eight to four, you could go eight to six or, or, you know, do a, uh, ten to twelve hour shifts.
Sure.
Add a few and then cover your, your three shifts that way, you know, with your rotating. I mean, eventually as we, you know, get, uh, our population growth then, and the money with what, you know, Mason's talking about, the value of the, of the new property coming in, we might be able to come up with that extra money. I'm just looking at, at different opportunities for, for both of the city and the county to be able to come up with this money to provide this. And I was just thinking of possible different ways.
So on, on that, let me, let me start at the back first. Uh, you know, the working in shifts of, you know, maybe a twelve hour shift or those kinds of things. Uh, those require more employees, okay?
Yeah, I know, I know.
So by doing more employee, obviously, uh, then they, they have employee benefit of, you know, hazard duty retirement, the insurance and then all those type of things, okay? So, uh, you end up more employees and more benefit. I think we would find that our cost is actually more, it's going to cost us more to operate than it would be on a, you know, for, on a twenty-four hour shift. Uh, you understand? So if I have three employees working eight hour shifts and I have to pay the benefit, you know, the, the wage may work out the same, but the, the benefit, uh, is going to greatly add, you know, and I feel like those expenses are going to outweigh just having one employee there twenty-four hours. Uh, if, if that makes sense to you. Uh, so the, the, the second part of that is can we ease into this thing, okay? And my answer is no. And I, and the reason being is number one, and I think we can all agree, I mean, it's, it is an employee safety issue, okay? So what you're essentially asking me to do is to send folks out there that, um, are, are not fully equipped to handle that situation, okay? Uh, if let's say, you know, let's say we, just a number, let's say three people, okay? We're going to put three people on a fire engine and we're going to send them out there to do that job, all right? So by, uh, CFR Code of Effective Regulations nineteen-ten-one-thirty-four says, and I'm going to paraphrase this, Mitch, you know, if we are entering an environment that requires us to put on an air pack, okay? Meaning pretty much anything above like a trash can fire, then we by that OSHA standard, you know, we have to put on an air pack, then we have to have, it's called the two in, two out rule. If I've got two people inside in that environment, I gotta have two people outside in case things go bad, they gotta go get them, okay? So, um, I am not willing to send my folks out there and violate that. I would, and this is going to sound horrible, I would rather just continue operating under the, the, the circumstances that we are and let the chips fall where they may than to place an individual, you know, in that scenario. Because what's going to happen is, uh, it's tough. It, it, and I've done it because maybe I've showed up first in command. It is tough to stand there and do nothing because that's not how we're wired. We're there to help, right? But sometimes you gotta be protective for yourself. And I'm, I'm not going, I'm just, it's not a conversation I really want to even entertain. I put a lot of thought into this, believe me, I have, um, and that's why I settled on the five, okay? Could the four people by code of, you know, by the OSHA code of regulations, if we wanted to keep ourselves out of trouble with OSHA? Because again, it's not a problem till it's a problem. Now, yes, am I going to feel absolutely awful? That's number one, is my personnel that's out there, obviously we want to protect it, okay? Do not want them hurt. But let's say they, you know, they knew better, they knew, and they, they went ahead and did something and they got hurt because that's a situation that, you know, we put them in, you know? We're certainly opening ourselves up to, uh, some, some problems with OSHA. And, you know, I can promise you, you know, we, we, we think the one point one million dollars is bad, it's, 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 they're going to come at us hard, okay? And that's money we get no benefit from, that money's, you know? So, uh, I, I tend to steer away from that conversation. So four, four people in theory, could we? Possibly. Here's the problem with it. Uh, the problem is these employees are all human, right? As part of their benefit package, we give them a day off. They get sick, you know? Whatever circumstance happens, okay? That employee does not show up for work that day, then we're back down to the three and then we're back to that scenario that I just gave you, okay? So as a, as a, um, you know, uh, if you were a person who's needed our services and your house is on fire and we roll up, you know, and three guys, ladies get off of a engine company, we could stand there and spray some water from the outside. If it's anything above incipient, which was the trash can fire that required us to put that air pack on, you know, are we going to stand out there and watch it burn, spray water from the outside? By law, that's what we should do. Now, are we, you know, um?
So you can't enter a house without air pack. On any type of fire, you've got to have.
If it requires us to put on an air pack. So basically the wording is anything above like an incipient, which is early stages, uh, uh, like a trash can fire, okay? If it's a trash can fire, you know, we've all had grease fires in our house, you, you put them out, you know, you might cough once or twice, but you're good, right? But if it's a smoky environment that, you know, beyond that, you know, you can't hold your breath, you can't, then we are by OSHA standard code effect, you know, the code of effective regulations, these are the same folks that say, and this does apply to this as well, but, you know, with all the construction, the confined spaces, these are the same folks that make those laws. And they're there, again, sometimes just to protect us. Because, you know, I mean, I, listen, I, you know, I grew up on a farm, I've done a lot of things, right? That, you know, I, I could sit here and do this, right? It's going to take me thirty, forty-five minutes to run over and do that. I ain't jumping hollow, not knocking out in five. I mean, you know, uh, so, but those, they, but that's, that is correct, you know, according to their. Now, the, the caveat to that, excuse me, that, the only, the only caveat to that or the exemption, if it is a known rescue. So if we know, you know, one hundred percent unequivocally, there's somebody in there, and we're not talking about your cats and dogs, okay? We're talking about human lives, then, then we're, we're exempt from that. Two folks can run in, we do what we need to do, we get out, okay? Now, if it's an unknown, by law, when we roll up, have no idea, you know, we, we can't, by law, okay? Yes, sir.
I've got a, just two or three things. Um, it sounds like everybody here in favor of this. All I would need to know, Chief, is, uh, we have the equipment now. We wouldn't have to, I mean, to operate.
So.
Basically, that, um, I just got two or three things.
Sure, go ahead, yep.
Um, I feel like we have enough equipment now to operate a full-time fire department because you're making the calls in line and all that.
Sure.
Um, but do we need anything additional? Um, also what I would like to have is what the cost of the building is, uh, if, and, and look at it both ways. Expanding what we have now or building a new building. I, I'd just like to know those calls.
Sure.
Um, uh, and, you know, one thing on the equipment, I know we've, um, right now Planning and Zone doesn't let anything over what a three-story building go because we, do we need to buy, do we need to figure on something bigger for the future if somebody wants to build a four-story hotel or a five-story hotel? Do we need that? And, um, you know, the cost associated with that? And if we're, what I'm hearing from everybody here, then I think we need to go ahead and schedule another joint meeting in January and have you get those numbers together and we can, uh, we can have those numbers in January because if this has to be on ballot next August, we don't have, we don't have a lot of time to be sitting here doing a lot of discussion on the, you know, the nitpicking stuff or the, or the small details. We need to have those numbers and we need to make a decision sooner than later because this has got to be put on ballot if, if we're wanting people to vote on it.
Yeah, that, that is correct. So again, it's kind of one of those, i- if we want it on, if, if we want it, if we agree, you know, hey, we, we want full-time fire service. You know, obviously we want it as fast as possible than the twenty-three with the governor's ballot is the, that, that would be the optimal time. Uh, so, you know, under that scenario, you're right, we're, we're ten months out, we got a lot, a lot of ground to cover between, uh, now and then. So.
The only other comment I'm going to say is we've been talking about this, I've been on fiscal court now for sixteen years and we've been talking about it. And so we're at a point now where we either, we either need to do this or quit talking about it. Because it's, you know, we all feel there's a need and we're now, I think, at an optimal time to get something done with this. So I would like to, to pro- proceed with this pretty quick and, and let's, let's get on with it.
Judge, I know you said there's some unlimited conversation about this.
Do what now?
I know initially when you, when you rolled this out, we were going to have limited conversation and it's probably exceeded probably maybe what you said initially. Marty just brought up a point that made my wheels start over. Obviously, we rolling out the idea of a full-time fire, uh, fire department here. Uh, I think nobody's a secret, it's not a secret to anyone, one of our priorities is public safety. So that fits in that realm. Uh, some of the conversation that we are being fed, let me say this too. Thank you for all your information.
Yes.
You've been worked up here today, without a doubt.
That's all right.
I appreciate that because he's definitely done his job. I don't know nothing about fighting fire. I'm not trying to get offensive to some of that. But you know what you need and you know how you need it. And you present that to us and we'll look at it and try to give that to you the best way that we know how. Obviously, there's a lot of questions in talking about this and we could talk all day. Uh, I don't know how ready we are to really even roll out the idea of a full-time, full-time fire, uh, department. Although there may be a great need for it and we definitely can talk about it. Marty said, you know, maybe January, we need to come back and, and do a joint session. You know, my, my thought on this is that maybe we need to do some, uh, some workshop sessions leading up to this so we can actually roll out something that the people can say, okay, I see where they're going with this. I see what it's going to cost because we throw a lot of stuff around today and we're rolling out the idea of a full-time fire department. I think when we get ready to really do that, I think a lot of the questions and, and things that we're talking about today, we should have already have some done all about it. We're here today and we're asking a real serious question. Is this something we want to do? There's a lot of questions about what it is we get ready to do. We might very well need to do this, but we have got to have some final conversation that makes sense to be able to present this. I mean, he, chief has done his homework, he's gave us some figures, but it was one thing that he may mention, oh, I never, never thought about. And that was building a building. To, I, I never thought about that. Well, that's another cost.
So.
That was another cost. So, you know, these are the things that we need to be able to have all, some kind of perimeter on when we present this as what it is, the ideology of what it is we feel like we need to do in the community. Because I, I, you know, if, if a full, if, if we put it on the ballot and the citizens in Franklin want to do this, we got to find a way to get it done.
Well, here, here's the, let, let's say this, and I think we could probably wrap this portion of this up and move to the next thing. Uh, Marty would know more about how long the court has talked about this than I would because I've been here four years, he's been here sixteen years. I just know that it's been important to me since I got here and the chief has done a lot of work. I mean, he, he brought a lot of information today and it just, this was not just information he gathered over the last week or so.
Oh, I, I had to.
This has been a conversation that we've had, uh, ongoing and off and on for the entire four years that I've been here.
And we did this for the city too.
Yeah.
Because we had contingency plans to come into place. It's under, it's under the thought of, of a new, whatever the fire department needs. You know, we do contingency plans, set aside money to be able to make those contributions outside of the contribution that we make for the department. So don't think for one second within the city that we're not, even though it's under you guys, under relevant, the county, I hate to use that term, you guys, but, but the county, all of us under the whole Franklin and Simpson County umbrella to make sure that the public safety meets its needs. We talk about this to make sure that we are in a place to be able to give you guys, uh, fire department what they need.
May, maybe, I think maybe what we could do here and, uh, maybe whether we do it every week or at least every other week for the next little while is, is me, the city manager and the chief sit down and have discussions and come up with a plan that, that initially we may not have to have a joint meeting immediately, but we're going to have to have one pretty soon. If the plans and individual meetings, like here's the plan and everyone's agreeable, then we come back together. But over, I, I mean, maybe, maybe at least bi-weekly meetings for the next six or eight weeks, you know, that'd give us three or four meetings there to kind of put some stuff together and, and work on it and we could be updating each body individually in our individual meetings as we go forward. Uh. Judge, if I may, before we move on to line item number two, uh, there's a few things I do want to address and pick up on, answer some of Marty's questions and a couple of things. First of all, it's very, very well spoken and said, I agree. Uh, you know, I understand this is a lot of information, okay? It's, it's somewhat secondhand to me because I've been working on this, okay? But I understand I'm one of, if somebody throws something at me, I, I need time, like I, I, you know, I need a little time, okay?
Uh, you're talking about, the, how much room do we have out there at the fire station now?
Okay, I'm going to cover that here in just a second, so, um, try that, okay? So, uh, again, um, you know, I, I'm throwing a lot out there at it, you know, if you have questions, you know, whatever. I mean, obviously, uh, city manager, the judge or whoever you want to relay those, you can call me directly, you know, whatever. I agree, it's, it's going to take a lot of effort, uh, to, to have open conversations. And again, that's a, you know, I'm just proud that we're here today to have a conversation, uh, about it. So thank you for your time on all that. Uh, so Marty, you mentioned, uh, the equipment, uh, how we're equipped today, okay? We're, this is, the, the, this endeavor is not necessarily going to require us to have to purchase any new equipment. Uh, our, our plan all along is not really changing. The one that I presented to the court, I mean, you know, that, that's the, the, a lot of the equipment is overhead. Do I need it every single day? Nope, you know? But when I need it, I, I gotta have it, you know? And, uh, that, that's a, that is an issue. So a lot of that stuff is an overhead. Uh, so the two, we're, we're not necessarily going to have to go buy a new ladder truck specifically because we're operating around the clock now. Uh, a ladder truck is another conversation that I do need to, to address while I have everybody's attention. So, um, the, the, you asked about a new, a new building or the room. So the, the building that we're in now, again, like I said earlier, it, I, it was never was designed or equipped to have, uh.
But is, is it room to add to that building?
Okay, so.
That's what I'm asking.
All right, so the, the, the structure of that itself, okay? If we add to it, just butt a wall, you know, knock out a wall and keep going. I believe we're going to end up having to go back and retrofit the sprinklers and the whole thing because we will exceed it our size. You know, again, the building code may change a little bit, but it, it's possible, okay? But I, I don't think so. So again, that opens up the revi- you know, that opens up, okay, if we, if we can't do that or that's not the best uses of our money, uh, you know, how do we, can we build something that is, uh, more economical that's going to better suit our need? So maybe we go out back and, and again, they should just thought, I've, I've, I've played devil's advocate on this, you know, for a long time.
Well, the reason, reason why I asked that question because I was a commissioner when that building was built out there and it, the location was the reason, it was built there to get around ten oh eight, you could go in around.
Yep.
And I was just wondering, the acreage, could it be renovated where you wouldn't have to build a new fire station?
Uh, I, I, I don't know. Uh, I, I, I don't know, the, the, when I think about the fire station, again, we're really more, the, the equipment side of things is fine. I mean, it could be...
I mean, the building itself, that's what I...
The, yeah, but we're gonna have to, we have already done everything inside the footprint of the existing building that can be done.
But you can't add to it and get what you need, can't you?
Well, that's what I just stated a while ago. We're, we're gonna run into some building code issues is what I'm thinking. Could it be done? And I, I mean, yes, but we're, we're throwing more money at it than what, I, I don't know, I've not analyzed those costs. Because again, that's kind of step two in the conversation. You know, I'm trying to clear hurdle number one. Now, those are all great questions, and I'll be happy to work on those if I can, you know, get, get, that's not really my expertise, but, you know, we got some contractors on, you know, that I'll be able to...
When you put it on the ballot, you know...
Well, so again, that goes back to, uh, you know, what Commissioner Stewart said, some of those things gotta be worked out in the conversation and figure out which way is the best avenue, and then...
Chief, we could, we could work on the building part, and we could pull all that together to bring back to individual meetings.
Sure, I mean, we can work on that, I just don't have that answer for you today. Having said that, though, there may be a different opportunity, and again, I alluded to it earlier. You know, maybe, you know, if we're looking at our community and saying, hey, you know, man, Kentucky Down's blowing up out there, and, and everything around that's gonna blow up, you know, it just makes sense to put a station out there somewhere, you know, uh, because we're beyond five miles, uh, you know, Caddy's Road roughly, you know, we're beyond five miles from the, the, this station here in town. So then, you know, then those people that are essentially uncovered, uh, ISO would be, you know, could, could fall into that umbrella. Uh, and again, we might be able to build something that allows us to kill two or three birds with one stone. You know, we do the ISO thing, you know, where we're in that five miles, we build something that will accommodate, you know, proper sleeping quarters, uh, you know, and all those things. And it gets us enough room that we can put some of our equipment inside or out of this other building that we know, you know, we've got to do something with at some point. So again, that's, that's a, I'm happy to work on those things, but those are just conversations that I can't, all I can do is kind of give you what my thoughts are on it. And then, you know, it'll be, uh, up to you folks to decide, yeah, that makes sense for our community, or, you know, no, man, that's, that's crazy, we don't wanna do that, so...
Chief, it, it, Kenton, are you good for us to have a weekly, or at least bi-weekly meeting, you and I and the chief, and kind of try to get some groundwork laid on what we would actually have to have, and what we would need, and how it would all look, and you take it back to the commission and...
Yeah, I think we push too often, I mean, there's a lot of information that we need more time to put together something that's, you know, understandable. Sure. No, I'm just going back to the police department ability. We're five years into it, of course, we, that timeline is a lot shorter, obviously, but construction costs and everything else has gone up out of the roof. But I think just to do a, a real, not a deep dive, but just a good, you know, understanding what cost is and, and especially site. Site has another thing, if you're gonna go north or south or existing.
Yeah, yeah, and it's just, it's just conversation, because again, I don't want to be, I don't want to be standing here in front of the five years from now behind the eight ball because we're exploded somewhere and, you know, for all these issues. I just, a- as a community, I think we, you know, we, we need to be responsible and try to be as proactive as we can, you know, instead of reacting to bad situations.
Well, I think everybody knows that if they've been talking about this for sixteen years, probably twenty years, there's a reason, and it's all about the money.
Yeah.
So, that's what we got to come up with.
So, one last thing before we move on to, or before we move on to the next item, was the, the, you mentioned the ladder truck, okay? So at some point, uh, we do have a plan in place, uh, you know, to, uh, to replace vehicles on a somewhat normal schedule, right? So, but if you guys, if the court board, remember the city commission, may not know, uh, the, we were able to, to work inside that plan, everything except for the ladder truck. Uh, because that is, that is gonna be a very large expense, uh, that we're gonna have to, so, uh, that had to happen either way, has nothing to do with this conversation, but that was gonna have to happen either way because, uh, we're gonna need a different apparatus to meet our need. What we have today is a stick ladder, you know, there's a stick, you climb to the top, it's got a nozzle, and, uh, uh, those are, they are, it's kind of a little way of doing things, alright? So now they have what's called a tower or a bucket, you know, you can essentially set it on the ground, your, your people climb in it and put them where they need to go, it's got two separate sets of nozzles in it. Surely you put the more risky things as well, you can pick people up, put them in the bucket with you, you know, those kinds of things. Uh, but again, those are, those are for, uh, kind of a dust real tight type of things. So at some point, uh, you know, again, going back to our agreement that we have in our local agreement, you know, on the cost on that. I know the city before had done some work, you know, and, and set aside some bulletins, you know, for that, like you mentioned earlier, there's always contingency going on. You know, and we have to do the same thing and just figure out where, where we're at on that. And, uh, but that is gonna have to happen at some point. So the, the truck that we're in, uh, you know, it's a ninety-eight model, it's not that it's terribly hurt other than, uh, routine cost on, I mean, you know, you, you can't, we, we, you can't even take that truck to the shop, it's ten thousand dollars, I mean, it's just getting, it's getting ridiculous. But, so again, we gotta have that thing funded, and if we order it, we're two years out of the ladder trucks, you know. So, the, again, it's just, we, there's challenges everywhere we're all aware of, but, you know, if we don't have some kind of meaningful conversation about it, we're, we're not gonna get anywhere on that either. Okay, so, I'm, I'm good on my end, does anybody have anything else that you would...
Yeah, we, we finally need to move to the...
Okay.
Only other comment I'm gonna say is Scott, you're right, this has been talked about a long time, it's talked about a whole lot about every four years. And that's the reason I said, let's schedule a meeting, let's get this information together and schedule a meeting in January. So in four years from now, we're not sitting up here talking about, boy, we really need to have full-time fire department, we're gonna do it. Let's, I mean, it's, it's time to make, put some action to it.
Alright, so in that same vein, and, uh, we can't take this much time on this one, Chief.
I'll, I'll do my best, I apologize.
Uh, in the, in the interim, is a brief discussion here about how can we bridge the gap? And so it would be some discussion about volunteer firefighter stipend, especially as it brings, uh, right, as it goes with the call-outs and the weekend shift that you talked about a minute ago. Obviously, the, we upped the call-out stipend, the effect of this new fiscal year, and then we have a twenty-four-hour Saturday shield, but that's when you only staff that if you have enough volunteers to agree to do it the same weekend, correct?
Yeah, so it is, uh, you know, it's there, obviously, you know, we, we, we try to get people to fill in that shift so we can at least have, at least have four people there. Uh, but we're still having, you know, even then, uh, you know, we have four people that can at least get there and start making a difference. Uh, but we still have other people, if it is what's considered an all-call event, like the structure where I mentioned, you know, you, we, you know. So four does at least give us our two out, two in, two out.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, but again, outside of that conversation, you know, you have to have...
And the point being, if you only have three people volunteer for a Saturday, we don't even run that...
No, we still do it, uh, because we, we have volunteer, you know, again, it's not a perfect system, but it, it is something because, uh, you know, can three people handle a car fire? Sure, and, you know, and we, there, there's less restrictions.
And, and they're typically there from seven AM Saturday morning to seven AM Sunday morning.
Yes, we run a seven A seven, uh, you know, the seven A on that.
And so that stipend, I, I'm, I'm not trying to cut you off here, I'm really not...
You go ahead, I get long-winded, I apologize.
Because we give Lisa fifteen minutes, and we've cut her down to five already now. So, so, uh, thi- this is a situation where these, these firefighters on the weekend stipend that do twenty-four-hour shields, they get a two-hundred-and-forty-dollar stipend. That's two-hundred-and-forty dollars, whether they go on the call or whether they don't. And even if they go on a call, they don't get the additional call-out stipends like a volunteer firefighter would get if they go out on a call, uh, this afternoon or this evening at some point. And so the question would be, and I'm not saying we need an answer here today, and this may be something we need to go back individually and have a deeper conversation in a court meeting and a commission meeting, is do we want to try to implement in the interim, maybe we look at doing a weekend stipend for a Sunday also? So you would have people that could volunteer for Saturday morning to Sunday morning, and volunteer for Sunday morning to Monday morning, and you kind of keep your weekends covered i- in the interim. And, and the other issue is adding more volunteers, Chief and I talked about this today, adding more volunteers may not necessarily be the answer to the, to the solution, because as you said, we've got eighteen, and, and let's say, let, let, and I'm not suggesting this, so if you're listening on the camera or you're in here hearing today, I'm not suggesting it, but let's say we said, okay, we're gonna do a call-out at a hundred dollars a call-out. And then we get thirty people come and say, I want to be a volunteer firefighter. Well, here's the thing, if they never show up to a run, we still have to buy three or four thousand dollars worth of turnout gear for them, and you don't wanna, you don't wanna suit up, you, you know, a bunch of additional people that may or may never show up. So we need to work on utilizing the ones we have and figure out how to do that, and so...
Yeah, there, there's, there's a couple of different models, and, you know, how people choose to run their volunteer departments and, and try, I mean, there are some that literally, you know, anybody that wants to enter, and, and, you know, they'll put sixty people on, and then, but again, you know, we have the challenge is, uh, you know, we're buying one set of turnout, that's a coat of pants, three, is three grand, okay? Four hundred dollar boots, you know, the, the radios now, I mean, we're, we're having a terrible time with that because of Motorola, we're having to, you know, hang up on getting them delivered. But, I mean, we just paid, what, like, eight thousand dollars or something for a Motorola radio, we put on some guy's hip, I mean... So I, I'm, I'm careful just to say, you know, who, there has to be some, some level of, you know, hey, we, we, we gotta have some kind of restrictions. I'm more about, hey, let's, let's figure out a way to incentivize and take care of the folks that we do have. And again, a, a lot of the challenges, and I've had some of this conversation with somebody earlier today, and I apologize, I don't remember who it was, I think it was somebody here. Uh, but we, we were talking about, uh, you know, most, of course, all volunteers have to run jobs, uh, but, you know, I mean, even my full-time staff, you know, we've all got some kind of side gig, a lot more yards, or, you know, I mean, uh, I don't know, some work picks up a couple extra shifts here and there, uh, you know, but all, all, even the full-time employees have, we have side gigs, right? Just to try to make, you know, my ends meet. And, you know, when you take that with the volunteer and apply, so they also, you know, have a job, and they probably have some kind of side gig. And then, you know, if our department volunteering is coming in, you know, late, way down the block. So, you know, again, maybe it's something, is there a way that we can look to, uh, through some kind of incentive? And it may not necessarily be monetary, you know, there are some places that do tax breaks on property taxes and things. I mean, people all over the country have gotten creative just because this is a, is, it's a, it's a problem, you know, nationwide, nothing exclusive to...
I guess my question is, how much is this gonna increase your budget?
Do I know?
If we did this stipend on the weekend, it's not in your budget now, correct?
No, no, I, I...
How much do you think, how much would it increase your budget?
Uh, I don't have that number, uh, I didn't even, we did, uh...
I, I was just, I thought that was...
We did that real quick, so if it was two forty and four times...
If you put two hundred and forty dollars per person, and you get four people to volunteer for a twenty-four-hour shield, and they do that fifty-two weeks out of the year, it adds roughly fifty thousand dollars, forty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars.
I just figured that's why he was asking about it, because it was gonna increase his budget.
Oh, it would, I mean, it would be roughly a fifty thousand dollar increase to the budget. So, I, I guess another question is, and, and since we really don't have much else to do, can we incorporate this conversation into our get-togethers? And I mean, not so that the city's bringing one thing back to the city and I'm bringing something, but so that we're both bringing the same thing back to the bodies of government and say, okay, here's, here's what we worked out, here's what the chief recommends, here's where we at, here's what it's all. And then we could, we could do, if we make any action, we could be ending the other body of government, making the same action.
The main thing is, in just my opinion, it's gonna be a short-term plan and a long-term plan.
Right.
Short-term, how do we get to the long-term?
How do we bridge the gap?
And that's what, I think that's what we're talking about now, and that's a recommendation from you, Chief, is watch your rest recommendation, and I agree. You want to take care of the people you got and make sure, and if some of the people that are not doing, you need to shell them out and get somebody else in it. So that was, I think, the opinion.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and you're right, as a matter of fact, we, uh, you know, again, uh, just briefly, like our, our, our radios that, that we're currently under, right? These things have been, they've been outdated forever, I really like them and they really work, and I don't like change, you know? I, I'm not trying to fix things, you know, that ain't broken. However, uh, you know, we, we can't get them anymore, like, we've been trying. So, uh, you know, it's a big deal, it's kind of like losing your cellphone, breaking it, you know, but we ain't going to getting another one, okay? But we're kind of waiting, we're, we're, we're waiting on Motorola to, to get us some, but, yeah, we, we did a recall just yesterday, it's like, hey, you know, man, if I hadn't seen you in a while, you know, uh, you know, we're, because again, I've got four new recruits that we're fixing to cut loose, uh, that's certainly gonna help, and, you know, I've, I've gotta be able to outfit them. And again, some of it's just supply chain issues that we're facing just like everybody else. So, but real quick, and then I will move on, I, I promise. Uh, so when we started the Saturday program to fund it, okay, I, I'm, I'm gonna throw this out there. At that time, we had six positions, full-time, alright? So, uh, you know, as Chief, we had two deputy chiefs at that, at that time, okay? So, the other deputy chief got hurt in an accident, uh, so he was off on mental, okay? So, his, we, we, we couldn't really do a lot with the position, couldn't do away with it because he, you know, may, may come back. Uh, but, so what we did was, we took those bullets, reallocated them. And what it worked out to was the fifty thousand dollars, well, that was just about what the salary was, just to pay. And we took that and funded the Saturday program, which I think was a great, great benefit, okay? Well, what it did free up was all of those benefit costs, you know, the insurance, the ha- the hazard duty, all those things that we weren't paying in that we did return back to the county's budget, and that was roughly twenty-five thousand dollars. That was money that they funded years ago, that we, you know, said, hey, here it is back, we're not gonna use it. So if you, if you thought about it this way, you could take those twenty-five that we, you know, said, back, add twenty-five, and there's your, you know, there's your Saturday. So, alright, thank you so much, I know it's a lot of information, I apologize if I got long-winded, but I am available, please call me if you...
If, if all minds good to move to the final topic?
Yes.
Alright.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Chief, thank you.
Good, good presentation, uh, discussion and possible action on the joint funding of the FS community parks. Marty, here's another one that we talk about every four years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, here are others that can talk about a lot.
Yeah, everybody's, yeah, so, but Lisa, we do appreciate you being here with us. Uh, I know you're doing a good job at the park, and you want to share some things with us?
Yes, and I, and I will be brief, I promise.
Okay, thank you.
But yes, thank you all for having us here, and I appreciate the kind words, I have to tell you, it's, our staff is doing a great job out there, uh, getting things done, getting things cleaned up, taking care of some, just giving the park a little love. But what I'm here to talk about today, as you all know, uh, we did the master plan, but we're not complete with it, we have completed step one. And I think there's some confusion, maybe within the community, of what's coming next. But we completed the question and answer session, where the public had their opportunity to comment, and they could do that either in person at the meeting, we had a tag building, or online, and we have got the results of that. Now, again, this is for Jim Roberts Community Park, because we already have a master plan for Lincoln Park. The REIT organization did that last year, so we're working with that plan as we do improvements at Lincoln, but we do already have a master plan for Lincoln Park, so this is for Jim Roberts Community Park. Uh, I did forward this, I hope all of you all had a chance to look at it, uh, prior to the meeting, if not, I'll just hit some of the summary. Uh, this is not a short-term plan, again, as you were talking about bridging the gap, we're going, well, some of these will be short-term goals, some will be long-term. Twenty-year plan, probably the tops. Uh, so we finished the quantitative and the qualitative of the questions, and basically, some of the numbers I wanted to give you is that fifty-five percent of our community that responded to this survey go to other communities to utilize their parks. And the top two reasons being is that those other communities have facilities that we don't have, or they have facilities that are in better condition than what we have. So those will be things that we'll be looking at as a board to see what we can improve. Ninety-three percent, which I said they were really surprised at how high this number was, consider parks an important, as important as other issues in the community, such as schools, hospitals, because this is a quality of life. This is where people improve their quality of life. And ninety-four percent, which he said was very, a very high number for a community, support, uh, efforts to improve our parks. Now, one of the questions on there was asking, what are you willing to pay to do this? And of that, thirty-three percent, thirty-three percent were willing to pay less than fifteen dollars a month. And of that, thirty-three percent, thirty-three percent were willing to pay less than fifteen dollars a month. But even if we had fifteen dollars a month, currently, based on the twenty-twenty census, I think it was twenty thousand people roughly.
Nineteen thousand nine fifty-six, I think, was the official.
So if you, basically, so just round it to twenty thousand, based on what we receive, city and county funding for operational cost, each of those citizens is paying the equivalent of twenty-four dollars and thirty-one cents per year to go toward parks. And so this states that they're willing to pay, thirty-three percent of them are less than, willing to pay less than fifteen dollars a month. So that's just some numbers pulled from that. And, no, excuse me, thirty-three percent are willing to pay more, forty-nine percent less than fifteen. So what is going to take place next, and we have this information, which, if you didn't get a chance to read, the night of and the final results, they're all pretty similar. And the top five things were splash pad, community center, pool, walking trails, dog park. I think one of those flipped from the night of meetings to after the online surveys. So when we have our Parks Board meeting this month, we will look at that, look at the programming and what the park's being used for. The top use, as it says, used for walking trails, even though we don't have official walking trails, they're using the roads to walk on, which is a safety issue. So that's, and that's something that we have already discussed in-house on how to improve those or to add those. So the Parks Board, because we do receive funding from both of you all, we will come up with a plan on what we would like to see at that park. Now, we're going to take the results of this, but also we're going to be looking at, and I'm not going to say issues, but some things that may be changing at the park, such as parking, congested areas where things have just been built because that's where they could be built at that time. We also, when we do this plan, we have to look at the makeup of the park and what areas we can build. Because as most of us in here know, that used to be a landfill, which limits those areas where we can excavate anything for footers or anything like that. So even though it's, the community wants a pool, you know, that may not be the best site for it, but we can give that information to city and county and then we can determine if in the future, as we say, growing with the fire departments, we need to expand our parks in other areas, maybe there are other more suited areas for that. Getting people to the park is also another concern safely because we don't have sidewalks or greenways. But we have been talking to the city and we haven't talked about lately, it's just loose conversation, but what can we do to help get people to our parks safely and get kids and adults too? Because if you drive North Street, almost on any given day, a pretty day, you're going to find a child or an adult on a bicycle or walking on North Street, which is a hazard. So the Parks Board will take all of these things in to consideration. Then with Los Design, the company that's doing our master plan, they will take all that information and they're going to render a drawing for us of what we would like to see. So if we have a community center in there, where's the best place for that? What's going to go around it? How are we going to do with parking? So again, this is a twenty-year plan. If you have not seen the plan for Lincoln Park, it'll be very similar to that, showing us where things will go. Then we will shop the type of things that we want. We will bring that back to city and county along with an opinion of estimated cost. So when this master plan is complete, we will have an idea of what each of these items will cost in today's market for us to build. Then we can sit down with you all and determine how can we fund this? You know, what grants can we pursue, you know, maybe corporate sponsorships? What can we do and how can we fund it? And I will leave it at that. I tried to sum it up pretty quickly for you all. But if you have any questions, I'm more than willing to.
You may have said, Lisa, but you said you completed step one. How many total steps do you anticipate? And did you give a timeframe on when you expect all of this to be complete so you start bringing plans? I mean, what are we talking?
We have two more steps, which actually tomorrow I have an online meeting with them to look at a rough rendering of some ideas that they have based off of these results. October thirtieth was our deadline, well, our rough deadline to have the final. So I would say no later than the first week, second week in November. We'll have that final drawing of what we would like to see the park in the future.
And then there will be how long, I mean, you.
Then we establish the timeline, like, let's say we choose which projects we want to do. And let's say, let's just say we do the walking trail and we do community center. Just because those are two big topics on there. One, how are we going to fund that and then what timeframe do we want to complete that? Because, I mean, we know we're not going to complete it in a year, but what timeframe do we want to complete that? And then how are we going to fund it?
And I know, I know you, you and I talked last week after the Human Rights Forum that the community center that you won't know until you get it, but you anticipate roughly five million dollars.
Roughly, based on, like we said, on construction costs, and well, this was two months ago, construction cost. They estimated about two-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars per square foot for a basic community center, which would be indoor multi-use courts, some space for senior fitness classes or fitness classes. We'd also like to incorporate some small meeting rooms because we have the Ag Building and that's a great asset. But the major, I'd say ninety percent of the phone calls that we receive wanting to rent indoor space are wanting smaller, more affordable spaces for small birthday parties. Because, I mean, that building accommodates four hundred.
So, so based on that number, and I've got a copy of this, if anyone wants to see this, I'll be glad to email it, send it, go down and print you off a copy. I talked with the folks at Compass Municipal Advisors about what a five-million-dollar bond would look like in today's money. And so you're looking at an average of about three-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand dollars a year in payment. So, and I've said this more than one time publicly, said it to the, to the city manager in a private conversation and said it way more than one time publicly. The, the city, y'all, y'all deserve a lot of credit and really, I, I hate to say the word pat on the back because it sounds kind of demeaning, but you deserve some accolades for putting together the contract with Kentucky Downs. So if you take, if you take that money that's coming to the park over those twenty years and pull that out of that bond payment and you split the remaining of it equally between the city and the county, you're talking about roughly a hundred-and-sixteen to seventeen thousand dollars average each for a twenty-year period on a bond payment if we'd done a five, a twenty-year, five-million-dollar bond.
That's true. And then again, we also have to plan for these other things as well. So, yeah, for those capital improvements. So we would want to keep that in mind too. You know, anyways, we're doing grants. Yes, it's, it is capital improvements.
So the way to pull that out for that community center, then you have to come up with a back somewhere else.
Correct, correct.
Yeah. Well, you may not get to eat the whole cake at one time. You may have to eat it a slice at a time.
But yes, that is, that is correct, Randy. If we committed that to that, we would not be utilizing it for other capital improvements.
That may not be necessarily guaranteed money either.
Correct.
Correct, I mean.
From, from the understanding with the contract, that is correct.
Well, I think we've been over it several times. Their gross revenue has to fall to a certain level for them to be able to opt out of it.
In addition to that, I mean, the, the particular organizations that were agreed to in the initial discussion may or may not always be the organizations that will receive that money. That is going, definitely look at that every year or two about how those organizations are using that and utilizing that, that donation. And if for any reason Kentucky Downs decides that they want another organization to get that money, they might say, well, instead of the Parks Department getting it this time, let's give it to the Boys and Girls Club. So therefore, we are not.
Was it, was it tied, was it, was it tied to the recipients of bingo revenue though?
Well, we, some extent.
I mean, because the Boys and Girls Club wasn't participating in bingo.
No, no, and Parks Department does not play bingo.
They did though.
They did.
They did.
They did.
They used to be their primary source of revenue.
But they didn't play there.
Well, they had a great sense of, you know, it's kind of, they also expressed to me that they wanted the most of it to do it.
Right. And, and I guess my question would be, don't, don't you think, and I mean, we can, all we can do is think and, and try to process what's happened. But don't you think if the park was really doing some positive, really outstanding things and improving and making things better in our community and, and the Downs was having this discussion and we said, hey, wait a minute, this is very, very important. We really want y'all to keep moving this direction. Don't you think they kind of listened to that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I mean, so your other caveats are the gross revenue, which, I mean, we're going to have to see an economic collapse for that gross revenue fall. And then, you know, the five of you on that city commission could answer the question of how eager you are to pass a citywide smoking ban because that would be the other reason they could quit. I mean, are y'all about to pass a citywide smoking ban? I mean, I, I, I'm just trying to lay out there, this, I mean, unless we really found something up, this, this seems like pretty sure.
What if they have a different owner? Is this, would this roll over to the new owners? It would roll over to the new owners?
Lisa, I appreciate what you're doing. I knew, I knew when you took this position that you were doing a great job and you are. And this, and I said this morning, and I mean, this is Kentucky Business Professional Women's League. And if it weren't for the women in our community doing the things that they do, we wouldn't accomplish near what you've accomplished. And that's true.
I won't deny it. I'm just saying, it is. But we do thank you all for your support because again, we couldn't do it without you all. And, and I don't just see you all in meetings and that's a great thing because I see you out, you ask questions, you see what's going on and you're supportive of it and we appreciate that and thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa.
Mayor is all way, it's all. All right, then I'll, I'll entertain a motion from the fiscal court to adjourn.
I'm ready.
Uh, majority and second, if they're all in favor of I. All right.